Good evening. Welcome to the Sampson City Council Meeting for Wednesday, January 19. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by Sampson Media on Charter Channel 193, and live streaming on their YouTube channel. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathering remotely on the executive order by Governor Baker extended to April 2022, which allowed us to do so. I will remind both, the members of the city council and of the public to remain mute until recognized by the president. Also, for members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak time or public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara?
Connie Denham? Salem Derby?
Present.
Omar Gomez?
Here.
JP Kuzinski? Tom Peak?
Here.
Brad Riley?
Here.
Dan Rist?
Here.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Here.
Owen Zaret?
Present.
Please sit there for the pleasure of the meeting.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands unnationed, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I will take a motion to accept the minutes from October 20th and December 15.
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes from October 20th and December 15, and for the discussion. Hearing none, Barbara?
Connie Denham?
Abstain.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Abstain.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Motion passes. I will take a motion for, uh, to accept the minutes from January 3rd and 5th.
I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, now is, uh, time for a public speak time. Uh, please state your name and address, um, and please say your address and keep your comment to the council, please. Uh, can you please write your hand, use the, uh, electronic hand that we have in the application, so that way we can, um, call you by your name with anyone from the public. Um, and, and for the, all those participants there now, um, talking now, could you please turn off your camera? Thank you. Deb?
Hi, um, yeah, uh, I, I've emailed all, all of the couns- councilors. Um, I, I know my, my name's Deb Friedman. I know my problem is hardly the worst anybody could have, especially in these times. Uh, I have a couple of comments I need to make about this. And it's about these LED lights that have been put on residential streets that are way too bright. And I, uh, several of you got back to me and said, get in touch with DPW. Um, EverSource can, can do something about the lights. So I, uh, 10 days ago, I, I emailed DPW and they said, yeah, we've got your address and, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll put you on the list for when they, when they dim the lights. And that was, that was 10 days ago. Um, and I called today just to ask if they had some sense of when it would happen. And I was told, oh, it could be five, anywhere from five days to three weeks, which if, that, you know, I don't, I don't know how much I believe that. But at any rate, um, one of my, one of the concerns I have is, and I don't know if any of you, uh, feel this way, but the person at DPW, when I called today at DPW, the person I spoke to made the comment that, um, some people, a lot of people like the lights. And I just want to say that that is very, um, that is very disturbing because this is not an equivalence. Those of us who have our, uh, our, our, you know, I can't, when I go to, when I go to bed at night and turn off my light, uh, turn off the light to go to sleep, I want to cry. And I don't think that the people who like the lights were crying because the lights weren't light, because they didn't have bright enough lights before these lights were put in. So there is no equivalence. And I don't, I don't mean to single out the person at DPW, but I, I want to make sure that nobody, nobody thinks there is any, um, any equivalence between liking the lights versus being very stressed out about this. Um, and I think the light should be turned off until they condemn them. That is, that is very much what I would like to see happen. Uh, I don't know why we weren't, you know, even asked, uh, about them. Uh, but at any rate, that was the main thing. I just wanted to, uh, express that and express how, how disturbing these lights are. Uh, at, at, at a time when we're all under stress, to have this additional stress is, um, it's just, it's just wrong. So that's it. I, I don't think, I think I said everything I needed to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Deb. I just want to make a comment about that. Um, is, is Greg Nuderman, the DPW director is on the call and I hope he's taking notes. Uh, by the way, I'm one of those councilors who send an email to DPW. Uh, so they know the, this is happening and they're going to resolve it as soon as possible, I hope. Uh, Maddie?
Hello, um, thank you. My name is, uh, Maddie McDougall. I'm from Resilient Community Arts. We're a new nonprofit based in Eastworks. And I'm sharing lunch now, um, with the Color Collaborative, also with Eastworks. Um, Maddie and I are working together. Uh, we've got a new after-school program, um, both for teens and for, um, younger kids, elementary schoolers, um, that were starting um, in East Hampton, and we wanted to share that. And, uh, Maddie's going to talk about the scholarship program that we're also offering.
Yes, so we, uh, also have, uh, funding to offer for scholarships specifically to teen artists who can commit to four sessions per month and are motivated by self-directed learning and can demonstrate financial need. Teens selected for the scholarship will be able to attend four studio sessions a month at no cost to them at all, and will also have the opportunity to renew their scholarship at the end of every month. Um, parents, guardians, uh, teachers, anyone can find details and register uh, students at resilientcommunityarts.org/programs. Uh, and both of our spaces, the Color Collaborative as well, we have, um, programs for families and individuals of all ages throughout the year. So we definitely encourage folks to check those out online and contact us via email at info@resilientcommunityarts.org.
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Anyone else from the public? Wally?
All right. Uh, let me see.
We can hear you now.
Okay, yeah, um, I'm sorry. Yeah, my name is Wally Rapelis and I, uh, I'm a resident on one South Hampshire Street. And back in December, in the Gazette, um, there was an article that I took, um, uh, a great deal of interest in. And the reason why is because I have always been looking for a model in which, um, I can see, uh, um, the, um, marketing of, uh, marketing of municipality, uh, in some ways is the same as, um, um, marketing for a, for a community or vice of, or, um, or vice versa. Um, but, um, and I already sent this over to, um, to Lindsay, uh, because she, uh, uh, with the mayor have spearheaded, uh, this program for, uh, uh, innovation ecosystem, ecosystem program. And I wanted to share with you, but, um, what, what I already, um, uh, emailed over to Lindsay and also to, uh, Councillor Owen Zaret. And I wrote to them from the article on public procurement in the December 20th edition of the Gazette, "You inspire us." And I'm speaking about, uh, Lindsay specifically, uh, to look out for one another. Economic justice becomes the headline once we are given the freedom of, uh, a global supply chain to meet our local needs and how best those needs can be fit in our own personal lives. Yet as forward-looking we are as a city, the competing agents of time and money are already spent before the horse has left the stall. Now, um, inclusivity, that's pointed out, uh, in the article in the Gazette. Uh, brokers' healthy relationships from the abiding equity from economic justice together with human rights. In other words, there are these intangibles that are part of the beauty, uh, in, uh, in forums such as this where we have the opportunity to share ideas. From the expression, "Think globally, act locally", we are also feeding an agenda that promotes a sustainable economic blueprint. We are also, we also know that ideas are the currency for an entrepreneur's access to credit. And I'm excited to see how this initiative takes shape. And I don't know at what stage I have, um, brought my, um, my concerns, uh, to, um, to the committee, but, um, any thoughts that, uh, you would like to, uh, share with me at the present time?
Um, uh, Wally, uh, by rules for the open meeting law, uh, we are not allowed to have deliberations, um, if it is not part of the agenda. So what we can do is contact, uh, give us a call, um, or Owen has your information, Councilor Sarret has your information. He will share with us and we will be contacting you.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Wally.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none is, uh, 6:13. We have a couple of minutes before 6:15. Um, any communication for the elected official boards or on committees? No? Oh, you don't want to take those two minutes?
Uh, President Gomez, I'm going to be speaking a lot during the public hearing, so I'll spare him.
All right. Um, correspondent from announcements, president or vice president, communication? Anything from the vice president?
No, Mr. President.
And I don't have anything either. So is 6:14. Um, if I don't see any objection, uh, we can start with a public hearing.
Move the public hearings be opened.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to open a public hearing. Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Motion passes. Public hearing is open. Uh, the first, uh, item that we have is, uh, two poll locations. And, uh, Consul Kuzinski is not here, uh, but we have Consul Sarret that is going to take care of this.
Thank you, President Gomez. Uh, the first, uh, item is a poll request, uh, for 20 slash 30 Ballard Street. This was, um, initially introduced in the November 17th city council packet. Uh, property met around that time and approved, uh, recommended this, uh, poll uh, location three to nothing. Uh, what this will achieve, uh, will be installing a solely owned pole. This is strictly, um, uh, power supply on the west side of Ballard Street as well as locating, uh, two new, uh, pad-mounted transformers. So my understanding is that this is to allow, um, for utilities expansion for a potential building on that side of the street where there are currently vacant lots. Um, we had recommended this and a, um, a resident came forward who lived on the opposite side of the street with concerns. Um, I appreciate the council's patience in this, um, as we needed EverSource to be able to answer their questions. Um, and in, in the meantime, I think between a couple of meetings, EverSource, an EverSource agent was able to meet with that resident and address their concerns, which mostly, uh, related to whether there would be digging or disturbance on their side of the street, which there would not be. Um, so I don't know if the EverSource rep is here. This is a pretty straightforward, uh, poll, uh, poll, uh, granted permission for a poll and two transformers. Um, uh, so I'll pause here, Mr. President, if there's, uh, any questions or I hand it back to you for a second.
Is any question for the councilors? I don't see any, any question from the public. I don't see any there. Um, Consul Sarret?
Okay, if there are no concerns, then at this time I'd like to make a motion, um, uh, to grant the request by EverSource to install one solely owned pole on the west side of Ballard Street across from 25 Ballard Street and underground conduit and cable to two pad-mounted transformers. Pole 5 slash 7 will be located approximately, um, 729 feet south of Lyman Street and 20 feet from the centerline of Ballard Street. Pole 5 slash 8 approximately 649 south, feet south of Lyman Street and 20 feet south to the centerline of Ballard Street. And Pole 59P will be approximately 449 feet south of Lyman Street and 20 feet from the centerline of Ballard Street. The purpose of this pole and pads is to bring power to four new houses. The petitioner agrees to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on the pole for fire and police telephone signal wires to the municipality and, uh, to, uh, an additional expansion, uh, by the municipality for communication purposes. That's in the form of a motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second, uh, for the poll location of 2030 Ballard Street. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consul Sarret for the 45 Park Street joint poll location?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is a, uh, request again from EverSource, um, and a jointly, for a jointly owned pole with EverSource and Verizon, uh, to supply utilities and, and communication signals, um, uh, in order to upgrade service for 45 Park Street. Uh, this is primarily for, I believe, buildings on the Williston campus. Uh, the, um, it, it's, the request is for a one jointly owned pole, a pole 130 slash 14M, uh, and this would be a mid-span pole, uh, five feet west of the edge of the pavement of Park Street. And 50 feet southwest of the existing pole, 130 slash 14. The purpose of this pole is to upgrade service for 45 Park Street. Uh, property met, uh, on this at our last meeting. This was introduced in the December 15th city council packet. Uh, and with very brief deliberation, uh, the property committee recommended 3-0 uh, to the council to permit this pole installation.
Any councilor have any question? Any from the public? Seeing none, Consul Sarret?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to request by EverSource and Verizon, uh, to grant permission to install one jointly owned pole, 130 slash 14M, to be located five feet west of the edge of pavement on Park Street and 50 feet southwest of the distant pole 130 slash 14 to upgrade service of 45 Park Street. The petitioner's agreed to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on the pole for fire, police telephone signal wires, uh, and for additional future expansion by the municipality for, uh, communication and municipal purposes. That's in the form of a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to install a joint poll location, joint, uh, a pole in 45 Park Street. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we have the city ordinance amendment, uh, Consul Rist.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a number of finance committee items on the, uh, public hearing agenda. The first one is a city ordinance amendment. This is a regularly needed amendment when we, ever we change the financial uh, parts of the classification and pay plan. Uh, councilors will remember that we approved a $27,000, I think, dollar amount for COLA increases to pay plan employees. For the public's sake, pay plan employees are non-unionized employees, uh, who work for the city. However, whenever we change, uh, the financial aspects, we must also change the ordinance that accompanies it. Unfortunately, that ordinance did not accompany the, the, that particular request in December. So it is here before us, simply as a matter of necessity. Um, the COLAs will be retroactive to January 1st. And until we pass this ordinance, the pay plan employees will not get their raises. So I, I'd like us to do this tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any councilor have any question? Anyone from the public have any question for comment? Seeing none, Consul Rist?
I move to amend the city ordinances, Chapter 7, Article 2, Classification and Pay Plan, Section 7-18 by substituting Exhibit B, Salary and Wage Scale, as on file in the Office of the City Clerk, dated July 1st, 2019, with the attached Exhibit B, Salary and Wage Scale, dated January 1st, 2022, and to establish the effective date of said substitution as January 1st, 2022.
Second. We have a motion and a second, uh, to, for the city ordinance, amend Chapter 7, Section 7-18, to replace a 16 classification of pay plan, Exhibit B, effective January 1st, 2022. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consul Rist?
Thank you, Mr. President. Moving on to DPW requests. The first is a $50,000 appropriation request to replace water meters. As our continuing councilors know, we do this every year. Each, uh, about approximately 250 water meters are replaced. Um, most of them are older water meters. Uh, this will allow for radio, uh, meter, uh, meters to be installed. They're about $200 each. These new water meters give us accurate readings, helps the resident and helps the city maintain the water supply. Uh, I don't know if Greg wants to add anything, but this is something we have to do every year to keep our water meters going.
Before, um, he had something, I just want to, um, see if any councilor have any question, uh, to Consul Rist? Anyone have any question to Mr. Nuderman? No? Uh, Dan, the, uh, Consul Rist, do you have any question for, for Mr. Nuderman?
No, I wanted to give him opportunity if he wanted to, uh, speak to it. Uh, this is pretty...
Yes, it's pretty simple, uh, Mr. Nuderman, you want to add something?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm good. Consul Rist pretty much covered it. Thank you.
Okay, good. Anyone from the public have any question or comment? Seeing none, uh, Consul Rist?
Thank you. I move that the council approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested was $50,000. To be transferred from enterprise retained earnings, $50,000, to be transferred to the FY22 water meter account, $50,000, for the following purpose. The Water Division replaces approximately 250 water meters annually. Costs per meter varies based on size and type. A standard residential size meter with integrated radio reading capability is approximately $200.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for, uh, this appropriation. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consul Rist?
The next item is a very important $112,000 for various water division repairs and wastewater treatment plant repairs. Um, ladies and gentlemen of the council as well as, uh, the public, our wastewater treatment plant especially is in need of major love. We are constantly in need of repairing it. It is over 100 years old. And this is trying to keep up with those replacements. Let me say, if we don't do these, um, this is about sewer water and I can just imagine what might happen. One of the items which was very interesting to me is, uh, cellular communication has to be replaced so that the people at the water treatment plant will know if one of the pumps that pumps sewer water is failing. Um, and we have to replace that because, um, I believe it's because it's 3G and now we need to be 5G. I really would like, uh, Director Nuderman to, uh, go into this in detail for the public, Mr. President, if, if that's all right.
Mr. Nuderman?
Sure, uh, Consul Rist, every, every item? Or would you like to just talk about the, uh, scadic communication terminals?
No, all of them because it's one motion, sir.
Yeah, so basically there, our wastewater treatment plant is, it, you know, I'm going to be back to council and, and, you know, I encourage everyone here to get involved in the conversations we're having with the Board of Public Works over rates and how we move forward with the infrastructure across the city that is past its expected life and, you know, aged, well-used and aged. It's, it's, you know, we have a pretty robust, uh, drinking water system. Um, however, there's, there's sections of main that need to be replaced. The wastewater treatment plant was primarily, parts of it were built in the 1950s, so some upgrades in the 1970s. All of it is basically past where it was expected to, uh, its expected service life. And years, our crew down there has done a great job of, of keeping things running. But we, we've hit a point with a lot of our infrastructure across the city where we can't buy parts for it anymore. Um, never mind the supply chain issues that we're dealing with, you know, from the pandemic. But, uh, we've got fiber optic infrastructure at the, uh, water treatment plant on Hendrick Street that was put in in, uh, the mid-1990s. And you, you can't even fix it anymore. We can't get the parts for that. And that's some of our newer stuff. And so we look at these things that were installed in the 1970s that, um, you know, we're having to have parts custom machined for to keep the, um, you know, essential infrastructure of the wastewater plant operating. Um, and, you know, every item on here is this, is kind of a, and I'll call it a Band-Aid to, you know, a much larger, you know, probably multimillion dollar project that's going to need to happen at the wastewater plant in the next, in the next 10 or 15 years. Uh, there's, there's a lot of things there that we can, we can keep moving along, but, um, a lot, a lot of repairs need to be made. So we've got some other, we're waiting to hear on some, uh, CDBG grant award to replace the sewer line on Cherry Street. And, you know, if that, if we get that grant, I'll be back to ask about some other things, pertinent needs at the wastewater plant that we need to deal with. Um, and if, if not, we need to look to our enterprise retained earnings for funding for that sewer main replacement so that the Cherry Street Municipal Vulnerability Improvement Project can move forward. So there, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of moving parts to everything we're trying to fund and, and keep working. And, and we try to do it in a way that is, um, respectful of, you know, everyone's, you know, you know, no one wants to see our water and sewer rates go up, but, um, it's... it's we're just getting to a point where we we've really got to start investing in the city's infrastructure. So if anyone has any questions about each, any of these, these repairs, um I'm happy to, happy to answer them, but it's basically just things are past their expected life and we need to we need to keep them, we gotta keep them, keep the plan operating.
Thank you, Mr. Nuderman. Uh Consular Sarah.
Uh thank you, President Gomez, and thank you um Director Nudelman for being here and and all you and your department do. Uh I'm curious, these repairs um and um and certainly I'm sympathetic to the plight of our infrastructure, our water and sewer infrastructure. So a couple, I think it was, might have even been at this point four more years ago, there was the study, I think Time Bond did it, that kinda detailed where we were and what we needed um and started the discussion of water and sewer rate increases. Is this a new item or was this part of uh some, uh was this part of one of the items that was described back then or?
Um portions of these repairs are gonna be listed as in the Integrated Water Resource Management Plan. You know, we've done everything we can to pick away at um the items listed in the uh the IWRMP with our O and M budget and with with rates where they've been at. Um you know, when the pandemic hit, there was a a a large discussion about um increasing water sewer rates and the possible creation of a stormwater utility and the pandemic really sidelined that. Um and you know, knowing, seeing what things are gonna be like going forward and up for us to project usage and you know, rate and and rates, it's it's challenging. And uh the Board of Public Works and and myself and uh Time Bond were really starting to ramp up our conversation this spring about a long-term rate structure for the city going forward. You know, like in in twenty twenty one, we saw increased usage. And every year prior to that, we saw decreased usage. So it was uh it it kind of an anomaly, but I I do think we're gonna see usage, you know, we've, we're seeing it decrease in twenty twenty two, and I think that will be the um that'll be the the pattern going forward that, you know, everywhere you go, you see low-flow toilets now and and conservation. And the, you know, one of the challenges with that is we, so we kinda, we have to, we were conserving and selling less and less water, yet it's costing us more and more money to to staff our departments and repair our infrastructure and and put and pump the water and put it in the pipes and and keep everything maintained. So um we've got some, some challenging discussions coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other counselor? Anyone from the public have any question of comment? Seeing none, uh Consular Rest.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the council adopt a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is of one hundred and twelve thousand dollars to be transferred from enterprise retained earnings, one hundred and twelve thousand dollars will be transferred to the FY twenty two wastewater treatment plant miscellaneous repairs account, one hundred and twelve thousand dollars for the following purpose. The funding will be used to perform the replacement of the following components of the city wastewater system. Grit chamber bucket elevators, dessert air activated valves, Ashley Circle lift station, redundant pump, cellular SCADA communication terminals, and the replacement of the wastewater treatment process water strainer.
Second.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second for supplemental appropriation from enterprise retained earning of uh one hundred and twelve thousand dollar from replace various component in the water uh wastewater system. Uh any further discussion? Seeing on Barbara.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Motion passes, Consular Rest.
I always remiss uh all of these have been approved three to zero by the Finance Committee, by the way. The last item is a forty two thousand six hundred and thirty five dollar uh request also from enterprise retained earnings to finish up the work at Charles Street. Uh Charles Street was given a community development block grant to repair the sewers in the Admiral Street neighborhood. Um this is an example of where grants have helped us to repair sewer lines. And uh the DPW needs some work to fit, finish up a bu- a bucket list of a couple of items, uh punch list, I'm sorry, of a couple of items that need to be done. So it's really a a matter of getting that sewer line finished. Uh again, uh Mr. Dulman's here if anybody has any questions.
Any council have any question for uh Mr. Nuderman? Please, anyone see any, uh anyone from the public have any question of uh comment about this particular supplemental appropriation? Seeing none, uh Consular Rest.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that supplemental appropriation be approved by the full council. The amount requested is forty two thousand six hundred and fifty five dollars to be transferred from enterprise retained earnings, forty two thousand six hundred and fifty five dollars to be transferred to the FY twenty two Charles Street CDBG Sewer Improvement Account, forty two thousand six hundred and fifty five dollars. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. Sewer and drainage improvements on Charles Street were recently completed as part of the Admiral Street Neighborhood Community Development Block Grant Project. We are requesting forty two thousand six hundred and fifty five dollars be appropriated from enterprise returned earnings to fund the improvements on Charles Street that could not be covered by grant funding. This work includes the replacement of all sanitary sewer and stormwater infrastructure.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second for the supplemental application from enterprise retained earning of forty two thousand dollars six hundred and fifty five dollar for sanitary sewer and stormwater infrastructure, infrastructure work on Charles Street. Uh any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Darren.
Yes.
I just wanted to add uh that the balance in enterprise retained earnings is around two million, two hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars. Uh so there is funding in there to make these repairs. Let's hope we don't have to make major ones and grants keep coming in. The next item is uh one that I'm very excited to bring forward to the uh the council. It's a CPA grant of forty two thousand five hundred dollars for a new skate park. This is a design uh the funding is for the design and construction cost estimates. Frequently, the CPA committee approves these amounts uh for design so that the uh planning department can seek grants once the designs are done. I'm gonna share the screen so the public can see where the skate park is going. Everybody see this? This is the skate park behind Fifty Payson. It's in the packet from January fifth. I want to make it clear that although this is the design and there's another uh idea for a design, all of this is what the company that's being hired will be looking at. Um there was some concern on the CPA and even in the Finance Committee level about uh taking away parking. Uh but again, that is something that is going to be looked at. The CPA Committee also asked and is going to get a part of the design. If you can see in this picture, this is where the skate park might go. This is a connection to the rail trail, making it possible for skateboarders not to have to travel down uh Pace and Avenue to get to the park, but to come from the skate, from the rail trail. This connection will also be part of the design. This possible connection to here is in the design, but it is not necessarily something the CPA Committee uh is approving. But all of it, this is all tentative based on the design. Um I would now bring it to uh our planner, Jeff Bag, if he wants to add anything, Mr. President.
Um before uh the city planner, uh any council have any question from uh for Consular Rest at this moment? No? Uh do you wanna add something? Uh City Planner, back?
Yeah, just briefly, thank you. Um you know, I just wanted to say I, um you know, this came out of the Open Space and Recreation Plan. There is kind of, you know, the sense of desire for East Hampton to kinda take some steps to diversify some of its recreational opportunities. And this is um, you know, this is one of the projects that rose to the top. Um there's a committed group of uh folks here, and I don't know if they'll speak tonight, but um they're forming, you know, a group and uh five oh one C three to um, you know, be prepared for future maintenance of the park. Um this is uh gonna create a conceptual design and cost estimate, as Consular Rest um said. And um in the last few rounds of um some specific grant sources, they are funding um the construction of skate parks. So this is kind of in line with kind of a trend that, you know, is really, you know, expected when you have so many kind of soccer fields, baseball fields, basketball courts, tennis courts and pickleball courts. We don't really have this other kind of set of more diverse uh recreational activities in East Hampton, so this is an effort to fill that gap. Um we will have two, at least two community meetings to talk about design and get input. Um and then um, you know, sometime, we hope in around July, we'll be done with at least a kind of a preferred design plan that would give us the launching point to seek grants um in the future. So I guess that was kind of my quick um additional summary.
Thank you. Any council have any question for to the city planner back? Consular Sarah.
Uh just more of a statement. Um uh, Mr. President, um in favor of this project. Um I've had the opportunity to kind of, to be involved in some of the discussions around this and uh have been able to meet and work a little bit with the group, uh the East Hampton Skate Park Group that's been putting this forward. I just want to commend them for uh their drive and as well as uh their organization around this. Uh they're a great group of people. Um and I I appreciate the um potential here as the planner said, to be able to diversify some of our parks and rec facilities. Um obviously, one of the ongoing issues here is the, always the shoestring budget of our parks and rec, but it's a good way to highlight that we need to consider expanding some funding from them. Unfortunately, skate parks, you know, relatively low maintenance, and these folks have done a great job, already have raised a few thousand dollars. As you're aware, we have a donation account. Um so uh I I can commend them more for where they've gotten in the process. I appreciate the CPA right making this recommendation. Um I think it's also okay to say too that um the group is also very fortunate that there's been some center veal has been kind enough to earmark uh some state funds, I believe fifteen thousand dollars for this project as well. So um kudos all around and looking forward to continue to see this progress.
Thank you, Consular. Consular Riley?
Um yeah, I also just wanted to um put some support out there for these individuals. Um I sat in on the last Finance Committee where they talked a pretty good deal about um the planning and the intention for the skate park. And um to me, it sounds like a really solid business proposal. They've thought a lot about um economic opportunity, uh safety and liability standards, and and I just think it's really great. Um and I'm really excited to see what they do with this uh location.
Thank you, Consular. Any other consul have any other question or comment? Seeing no, anyone from the public uh have any question or comment to this particular uh appropriation? I don't see any. So Consular Rest.
Thank you. Uh I wanna thank, I think there's some skate park uh members of the committee are here, and I wanna thank them for all their hard work on this. One of the things that was brought up, as Constable Zaret mentioned, is maintenance. And um they will do the work that's necessary to maintain it. Also, there was a comment I forgot to bring up about a fence that would be necessary along the pond. And that fence will not only be for safety, but also to keep garbage from getting into the pond. And I believe because I I've gotten to know uh this group that they will make this skate park um something that the city will be proud of. So I'll make a motion at this time. I move that the full council approve a supplemental appropriation request from the Community Preservation Act. The amount is forty two thousand five hundred dollars to be appropriated from the CPA Undesignated Fund, forty two thousand five hundred dollars to be appropriated to the skate park design account, forty two thousand five hundred dollars for the following purpose, to create conceptual designs, construction cost estimates, and for five community meetings at various stages of process for a new skate park at thirty two fifty Pace and Avenue.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a supplemental appropriation from CPA Fund of forty two thousand five hundred dollars from CPA Fund to to cover the cost of estimated design for a new skate park. Uh any further discussion? Consular Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll throw my two cents and I'll be quick. Um I just wanted to say this is a long time coming. Um you know, we had, when we redid Millside Park, there was plans for a skate park um in that proposal. And because of funding, it got sidelined and it never came back on track. So I'm really happy to see this moving forward. I think it's a great opportunity for the city and the residents. Um so I just, I'm really happy this is gonna move forward, hopefully. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh Barbara?
Uh Omar Gomez.
Aye.
Um, oh, sorry, that was Salem Derby.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Motion passes. Congratulations. Um Consular Rest.
Last item is an item from the IT Department, and before I turn it over to Dr. Comahart, I want to bring up a couple of items that were discussed at the Finance Committee level. There was robust discussion about this software um being, and I wanna thank uh Constable Riley who brought up a number of issues which are interesting. What this is not, it is not predictive software. It is not artificial intelligence that predicts uh crime and which targets minority and low-income neighborhoods. Um from the, and I think he's here, the executive uh with the CS Pro software uh made the comment that CS so, CS Pro software does not use algorithms to provide agency with computer-induced intelligent policing features or machine-based mapping. AI learning used to generate predictive trends is simply not available in the CS Pro suite. The CS Pro software can be used to identify incidents that have occurred in the past and provide excellent importing, reporting capabilities. This is data and data analysis. And another thing that was brought up eloquently by the mayor is this is attempting to adopt one of the uh recommendations that came out of the Public Safety Review of the Mayor's Pledge. And I'll read that recommendation. Um the recommendation is to engage in robust data collection, analysis, and regular reporting. With good data collection, we can track trends and patterns that can inform the approach that we need to take for other recommendations. Open data and transparency also leads to increased trust with the community. This is to improve transparency within the police policing in our city, and it is recommended by the Public Safety Committee and the Mayor's Pledge. Besides the software, what excites me also is that we're getting new servers. Uh one of the servers actually burned up, and I remember Dr. Comahart mentioning that she had to go over with her soldering iron to repair it. So it's about time we got rid of these old servers. So, Mr. President, with your uh permission, Dr. Comahart is here to make her comments, please.
Uh Dr. Karen?
Yep, so when DPW was talking about the end-of-life systems, I think we are in the same situation with police. We have a system that has reached end-of-life. And we are not putting a Band-Aid. We are going for the Cadillac, Cadillac. We're going to the top, top, top product. And why? Because in order to replace what we have, we had one requirement. We needed a system of the current system able to talk to other stations across Massachusetts. All police officers across the state using the system that we're currently using, the majority, share information. So that was our requirement. And we are excited to see that Central Square is the company that and Dennis is here, he can talk more in detail about this company, bought the IMC company that we had, put more resources into it, and now offer this top-of-the-line um system. Um why do we selected them? It's because of data transfer. They know our data. They know where it is hosted. We trust that all the transfer of data is going to be easy. Um you know, we have to preserve records, so we can't go with a company or it's risky to go with a company that doesn't understand our database. to go with a company that doesn't understand our database. So that was my concern. We need to go with a company that we trust is going to take care of our data. And the package that they offer is not only the software, is the servers that they are requiring us to have, top of the line, nothing that we buy in Amazon, and the training. They are going to walk us through the training and, and put a project manager to help us move forward.
Any councilor have any question? Councilor Rothschild?
I guess, well, congratulations on getting the funding and I know that we are very, we're in need of this technology. My question is around the human side of it in terms of, I'm glad to hear there's training that comes with it, but who's going to be responsible for working with this system? Who's going to make sure that the community gets the benefit from it as well? Because that was also part of the mayor's pledge that there's a third party that's involved in terms of getting the community benefit from it, to analyze it and share it out with the community. So I want to hear how it's connected to that piece. Thank you.
Doctor?
In the technology piece, that was an important component. Part of the system is the portal with public access that provides all this information that we're looking for to the public, transparency. So the technology is there. We just need to implement the system, but the technology is there to be transparent, to include the public. So this, this is the system that we want.
Let, let Councilor Zarrett first and then I'm going back to you, Councilor Rothschild, okay? Councilor Sarat?
Thank you. Thank you for everyone's work and discussion on this. My only real experience with police data portals in Massachusetts is the, is the one that North Hampton uses. Is this the software that they use or do they use something different?
That is probably a question for Dennis. I don't know. I don't believe that they use it, but Dennis, if you can answer that.
Is Dennis here?
Maybe Chief Albury will know.
Chief, are you around?
I am indeed. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm not sure what the portal that North Hampton PD uses. I think Dennis could probably speak to that. I see he's, looked like he was unmuted there. But I'm not, I'm not sure what they're using. I know that this is, I'm pretty, I would guess that they're not using this because this is certainly state-of-the-art and newer technology than North Hampton's had. They've had their portal up for quite some time. But I'd rather Dennis speak to that.
Dennis?
She's very, very far in Boston.
All right, while, while we get, um, let's see if I can, yeah, he's on mute. Councilor Rothschild, you have another question?
Yeah, I guess I just wasn't really satisfied with the answer. I mean, I know that the technology has a capability, but being an educational technologist and being part of institutions that put in large systems and spend a lot of money on it, if there's not the people and the will and the, the, um, the people that are going to be there facilitating that to happen, it's not going to be, it's, you know, it doesn't happen by itself. So I'm pleased that the capability is going to be there. I guess I'm a little disappointed or was hoping that there'd also be like a commitment discussion of engaging a third party, which was also a big part of the mayor's pledge. Westfield State came forward with a proposal and I don't think it's been followed up on. So I guess I'd like to hear some commitment from the mayor's office that they're, that we're still on that track, though that this is not only so that the police can improve their policing, and that's really important, I'm full support of that, but also so that the community can get the full benefit that they want out of it. So I would like to see that priority emphasized in this discussion as well.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other councilor have any question or comment? Anyone from the public have any question or comment about this particular appropriation? I don't see any. Councilor Rist?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll make a supplemental appropriation, a motion for the full council to approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is one hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents to be transferred from the cannabis account, one hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents to be transferred to the FY twenty-two Community Compact IT Grant, one hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. The amount requested will be used to supplement the cost of deploying the state-of-the-art public safety suite, including data conversion, migration, licenses and support. Central Square Pro is the number one public safety software. CS Pro integrates data across the system from nine-one-one to CAD to mobile to records to jail to administrative tasks. Critical information flows easily, no need for switching. It is powerful yet easy to use, one application, one system, one database and one password. The analytic module provides powerful reporting tools, map-based analysis, AI machine learning for proactive insights, charts and graphs for intelligent policing. With more automation and better use of data, the public is better informed and the agency better equipped to accomplish its mission. Through its portal or dispatch, police, fire and EMS services will be more accessible, approach, approachable and outwardly responsive. That's the motion. Need a second?
Need a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation from cannabis stabilization of, for one hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents to supplement grants, funding for the public safety IT computer upgrade. Any further discussion? Councilor Sarat?
Just a quick comment. I don't know if this, this answers the.
He's muted.
You're muted.
Muted, sorry. Just, I don't know if this answers the council's concerns. I wasn't able to attend the finance meeting, but I did speak, I did have a chance to at least ask some questions about this. It sounds like the intention is to be able to create a public portal. But I don't, I don't know that for sure, but I think that's one of the points of this software.
I can answer that. That's yes, it is a public portal.
Any other councilor have any question?
I have a quick question. And again, this might speak to, um, councillor's question. Does the Public Safety Committee, would they have any oversight of this or make requests for information, et cetera, et cetera?
Mr. President, if I may?
Uh, Councilor Rist?
That can happen if the Public Safety Committee makes a request through the full council to have a report on the software and how it's being used as it is done for like the fire department. It just needs to go through process. So if, if the Public Safety Committee wants to have those regular reports, that's up to the committee, I believe.
Thank you, Councilor Sarat.
I could speak as chair of the Public Safety Committee and to follow kind of the precedent that you set, Mr. President, that the goal this term will be to have regular meetings with all of the departments involved in public safety and to kind of develop some standards for reporting. And I think with this new software, this will only make more robust our ability to have those conversations, view those reports, as well as, I think, taking some burden off of the police department in the sense that it will be much easier now with a non-antiquated system to be able to produce these quickly, as well as, at least from my understanding, again, the public to engage with it. So, so that would be my plan to address the full council as well as Counselor Denham. I don't know if we're straying too much outside of the purposes of this discussion, but I can answer that question.
Councilor Peak?
Yeah, I would just say, you know, the vote that we're taking tonight is going to be about whether or not to approve the, the funds to, you know, to, to, to purchase the software. And on that, I'm definitely a, a yes, very much so. I do think that the information that we got about the capabilities of the software are encouraging. I would just say that I, you know, and it sounds like Counselor Zarrett sort of said that, you know, I don't need to worry too much about this and maybe my comments are a little bit redundant, but just this sort of big purchase for something like this, I think, you know, in terms of what, how the community benefits from it and how the city benefits from it and whatnot, I would expect like sort of an ongoing conversation and for public safety and the rest of the council, as well as the IT department, the police, the mayor's office and the community to be involved. Because I, I suspect that, you know, as we come to understand the capabilities and limitations of the software more, you know, whatever our first try, you know, whatever, whatever it looks like at first, practices might change over time. You know, partners, we might decide to engage partners to handle certain things. So there's a lot there. I guess where I'm saying is like tonight, we're going to vote on whether to buy it, but I don't think that's the end of the conversation about how this gets utilized. I hope it's not anyway.
Thank you, Councilor Peak. Barbara?
Okay, Omar Gomez?
Hi.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Brad Riley?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zarrett?
Yes.
Connie Dunham?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Motion passes. Councilor Sarat?
Thank you, President Gomez. I'll try to be as succinct with this as possible, although it's somewhat of a bulky conversation. So as everyone is aware, certainly within the council, as well as if you read the answers to the ever-present questions on Facebook when Union Street is getting paved, that there is a large infrastructure improvement plan coming with Union Street and the Union Street Tipped Project. In order to accomplish that, there are easements that need to be granted and taken. The city does have eminent domain. And in order to do so, we need to approve of the mayor being able to enter into negotiations or to make the, to take, make the order of taking, to take those easements. And in the case of some of the property owners, we have to offer fair market value for those. So the, the item before us has a few components. One is to allow the mayor to, to, to grant the mayor the ability to go forward with the order of taking. And the order of taking is basically, again, just property that we need for easements. There are both temporary five-year easements as well as permanent easements. We need to approve of an appropriation of approximately, exactly eighty-nine thousand five hundred ninety dollars for, again, to compensate for fair market value for landowners that are being paid. There were some landowners that donated, are willing to donate the land, the easement land, as well as the city will be donating land as well. And I believe there's, there will be language as well about the city donating the land. Included in the packet, our last council packet were a number of easement plans, as well as a list of properties, both in terms of the values thereof, as well as the types of easements that would be granted, granted, as well as some model language and the offers of fair compensation letters as well. The language changed slightly when we met at the property meeting and we recommended on all the items to recommend to the council. Those were all approved three-nothing. There were some mild changes, but they did not change significantly, at least from the original intended language in the, in the original council packet. Planner Bag is here, who could definitely speak to this a lot more eloquently than I can and is a lot more intimately involved with the project. And so, Mr. President, being informed of that, I'll turn it back to you to call on whoever you think is appropriate next.
Counselor, city planner back, do you want to give us a brief history about this project and what we're doing tonight?
Yeah, thank you. I thought, Counselor Zarrett did a great job. I think it covered all the elements in the packet and all the elements that, you know, are in front of the council. You know, this goes back all the way to 2015. There was a study done on Union Street to conceptualize what it could look like. You know, time has passed and 2018 in June was the first time that we met with property owners to review the plans. And then in January of 2020, through Mass DOT, the 25% design public hearing was held upstairs town hall, it's full, you know, the full house back then. And since then, you know, the city's consultant, which is VHB, myself, the city engineer, Dan Murphy, who's here, and then the city attorney, Mark Tanner, is also here. As a team, we've all been kind of going through these steps that are all pretty, pretty rigid, dictated by Mass DOT. So from 25, it goes to 50%, 75% and 100% design. And at 100% design was back in around May. And at that juncture was when we made contact by certified mail to all the property, property owners on Union Street. And then as recently as December ninth, the property owners again were notified and certified by certified mail of their appraisal, the easement plans and then the fair market offer. That leads us to today. There's a table in the packet that articulates, you know, which, which owners are getting compensated and how, by how much. And that's, that's the eighty-nine thousand five hundred. I did want to take a second to, to acknowledge the people who did donate, because I think, you know, it's, it's just important that they, it's not that the other property owners did not appreciate the project, but the donations is a helpful thing for the city. It has reduced the cost of this project. And so those include Charles Edward Realty Trust, the East Hampton Chamber of Commerce, the East Hampton Congregational Church, East Hampton Mahadev, East Hampton Savings Bank, RAB Holdings, Center for Human Development and Williston. And so I just wanted to kind of list out those property owners who did donate, you know, all these easements to, to the city. The city has a couple areas, like if you envision the rail trail, that area is city-owned and we also need to grant the easements to Mastod and the contractor for the project. So those are the city's donations. There's a couple other areas, but that's the idea. I did, I think the last thing I just wanted to say is that in the December ninth mailing to property owners, this hearing day and time was listed for those people to attend and potentially ask questions or clarify anything. But in terms of a critical path, someone asked me recently is if something's imminent. And so inaction tonight, you know, is intended to kind of queue us up to hopefully get the project out to bid in March. So imminent being tonight, between now and March, we hope to get the project out to bid. And then, you know, if we can stay this course, you know, construction, what we're being told, the best information we have is that we would start construction maybe late spring or early summer. But, you know, things like the pandemic have, have affected a lot of things, but we have been, as a team internally, we've been trying really hard to keep this project on track despite, despite kind of all the noise around us with the pandemic. So I think with that, I'll pause. If there's questions or if there's anyone from the public here, so thank you.
Thank you, Planner Back. Any councilor have any question? I do have one that I made at the Public Committee Meeting and that I found interesting that the easement is going to be for five years instead of two or three years. Is any particular reason why is, is going to be for five years and no less?
Yeah, so when we, you know, when we answered that question. Yeah. So when we, you know, when we answered that question for property subcommittee, it was really a mass DOT requirement. So uh, we are at their, and it's been a, it's been a collaborative process, but we are at their mercy. So that was, that's their standard um, requirement for these um, temporary easements. And the general idea is that we should be done um, much sooner than five years, but in the event that there's a remaining piece of a project that gets delayed, or there's that last punch list item, if we, if we don't have that easement still in place, technically we would have to go back all the way through this whole process again and start over. So I think it's like that safety measure.
And it's three different type of easements, right?
Correct. Yep. The temporary, um, you know, sidewalk replacement is a, is the example. So the sidewalk in front of a store will be removed and replaced. Um, and then another is like where construction workers might actually be present, walking. Uh, those are areas for temporary easement. Um, permanent easements are areas where Union Street is getting widened, um, mostly just a little bit. Um, or around um, for, you're having a couple of street trees and then the, the sidewalk next to it has a permanent easement around it to keep it open and accessible. Um, and then there, the last type is a, a permanent utility easement. So just imagine a utility pole that has to move over two feet and it's going to end up on private property that becomes a permanent, a permanent utility easement. So those are, those are like examples.
Thank you. Um, before the public, any counsel have any question to the city planner or the city solicitor? They're, both are here. Seeing none. Any from the public have any comment or questions about this uh, item? I'm gonna look, maybe where to see. Again, and anyone from the public, uh, have any comment or question? Seeing none, uh, we have four, uh, motion for this um, item. So Counselor Zerit?
Thank you, President Gomez. So yes, as you, so I will make the first motion. Um, uh, the first motion is, um, I move that the city council for the city of East Hampton, Massachusetts, uh, one, appropriate up to eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars from the Union Street Corridor Capital Project Fund, parentheses zero five four, close parentheses, to pay for the cost of acquisition by conveyance, exchange or eminent domain, taking the real property described in the quote, order of taking quote, for the purposes described in the order of taking for the East Hampton Union Street Corridor Project parentheses, order of taking, um, close parentheses, and that this vote shall take place, uh, take effect upon passage. That is a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerit?
Yes.
Motion passes. Counselor Zerit?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the next vote is uh, related to the city's donation of land for the um, expansion, construction of Union Street. Um, uh, I, in the form of a motion, I move that the city council for the city of East Hampton, Massachusetts, one, donate certain easements over real property owned by the city shown on the plan and detail in exhibit A to the order of taking for the purpose of reconstructing and expanding Union Street a public way in the city and two, that this vote shall take effect upon passage.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerit?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Motion passes. Counselor Zerit?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, as the counselors are aware in the packet, there were two resolutions, um, one of which we will end up reading in the next motion, but uh, the initial uh, resolution um, essentially uh, discusses our ability to acquire um, uh, property by eminent domain. Um, and I will make a motion at this time to approve that resolution without reading it in the form of the following motion. I move to approve the resolution to acquire by eminent domain, taking certain real property identified on a plan of land entitled, quote, "Plan of Easements to Be Taken by the City of East Hampton, Massachusetts, Hampshire County, Showing Locations of Easements for the Union Street Improvement Project," end quote.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerit?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Motion passes. Counselor, uh, Zerit?
Thank you, Mr. President. The final, the final motion and vote, uh, is a vote relative to eminent domain taking for expansion reconstruction of Union Street. Uh, and I move that the city council for the city of East Hampton, Massachusetts, one, approve and adopt the following order of taking, uh, titled Order of Taking Expansion and Reconstruction of Union Street a Public Way in East Hampton, Massachusetts, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Hampshire County, City of East Hampton. Whereas the city of East Hampton, Massachusetts, the city is a public body and corporate organized and existing pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law with offices of Fifty-Pace and Avenue, East Hampton, Hampshire County, Massachusetts, and whereas Chapter forty, Section fourteen, Chapter seventy-nine, Section one, uh, and Chapter eighty-two, Section twenty-four of the Massachusetts General Laws and other applicable statutes, and of any and every power and authority to it granted or implied, and the charter for the city of East Hampton, the city has the power to purchase, lease, take by eminent domain or otherwise acquire real property or any interest herein. And whereas accordingly, the city desires to expand and reconstruct all or portions of Union Street as shown on a plan of land entitled, quote, "Plan of Easements to Be Taken by the City of East Hampton, Massachusetts, Hampshire County, Showing Locations of Easements for the Union Street Improvement Project," end quote, dated December seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, recorded in the registry of deeds for Hampshire County, Massachusetts, which uh, plan is expressly incorporated herein by reference. And whereas the city has determined that consistent with the valid public purposes described above, it wishes to acquire an interest in certain real property shown on the plan as further identified in exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein. And whereas appraisals of the property to be taken have been complete in compliance with MGL Chapter seventy-nine, all the relevant and applicable laws. And whereas approval to acquire said land and an appropriation of the necessary funds has been made by the city council of the city, now therefore it is uh, ordered that acting through and under above cited authority and pursuant to the powers set forth in those acts, charter and statute, than any other authority there unto enabling and pursuant to the provisions of Chapter forty, Section fourteen, Chapter seventy-nine, Section one, and Chapter eighty-two, Section twenty-four of the Massachusetts General Law and the Charter for the City of East Hampton and other applicable statutes, and of any and every power and authority to it granted or implied, the city of East Hampton hereby takes for the above stated purposes the interest in certain real property shown on the plan and as described in exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein by reference, uh, uh, reference as taking. Uh, all land is owned or supposed to be owned by the individual identity specifically identified in exhibit A under the heading owner attached here to and incorporated herein. If the name of the owner is not correctly stated, the name of the supposed owner being given as of this order of taking is understood that in such instance, the land referred to is owned by an owner or owners unknown. All land is taken either in fee simple or by way of permanent or temporary easement as specifically identified in exhibit A under the heading, quote, "Interest Taken," end quote, attached here to and incorporated herein. No betterments are to be assessed under this taking. The city of East Hampton also takes all trees, structures and improvements on each of the foregoing properties shown in, on the plan and exhibit A, except as otherwise provided therein. Exempting from the rights taking from the real property identified on the plan and exhibit A are all easements for wires, pipes, conduits, poles and other opportu, opportunances for the conveyance of water, sewer, gas, oil, steam, electricity and telephone communications and other utilities now lawfully in or upon the land. We have determined that damages are sustained by the entity whose property is taken by this order as more fully set forth above and according, accordingly, we award damages pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter seventy-nine, uh, Section six, uh, to said individual or entity. It is further ordered that a representative um, of the city of East Hampton shall record this order of taking and a clerk's certificate documenting the due execution of a taking vote of the city council in the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds in Northampton, Massachusetts within thirty days from its final passage and shall notify the treasurer and collector of taxes in the city of East Hampton of this taking according to MGL Chapter seventy-nine, and shall cause notice of the taking to be given uh, to all purposes entitled here to and do all things necessary for delay of this order. Uh, two, we will award eminent domain damages for the properties affected by the order of taking and the amount detailed in exhibit A to the order of taking. Three, accept the donation of certain real property rights by the record owners of properties affected by the order of taking as described in exhibit A to the order of taking. Four, authorize the mayor of the city as necessary to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments relative to taking of the real property described in the order of taking as may be necessary on behalf of the city to effectuate said eminent domain takings. And alternatively, to the clerk of the city council is authorized to execute any and all instruments relative to the taking of property as may be necessary on behalf of the city to effectuate said eminent domain taking. Five, authorize the mayor of the city or her representative to record the order of taking and, and a clerk's certificate documenting the due execution of the taking of this vote of the city council of Hampshire County Registry of Deeds, Northampton, Massachusetts within thirty days from its final passage and thereafter notify the treasurer and collector of taxes of the city of East Hampton of this taking in accordance with MGL Chapter seventy-nine and shall cause notice of the taking to be taken, given to all persons entitled here to, uh, entitled thereto and do all things necessary for this or and. Six, that this vote shall take effect upon passage. That is in the form of a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Should I repeat that? We have a second. Uh, any further?
Can you read that again?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerit?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye. Motion passes. I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
So move, Mr. President.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Barbara?
Let's see. Um, where am I? Um, Brad Riley? Start with you.
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerit?
Uh, yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, mayor's communication, uh, mother mayor? I don't think she had anything, but just want to know if she changed her mind.
Hi, I'm sorry, my computers are all. Uh, nope, I did not change my mind, uh, uh, president, and I have no mayor communication. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Um, report of standing committee. Before uh, studying the report, I just want to remind everybody, uh, the counselors, the, the vice president is going to move all the new business at the end. So state yours with, uh, would you report, uh, to the president? Uh, thank you. Finance, uh, Counselor Rist?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, a lot of items were taken care of this evening. We will meet next week, uh, a week from tonight, primarily to discuss the request from the council clerk to review her salary. And we will begin discussions on city uh, council appoint, appointees and, and the, and the, their grade status, as well as uh, the new business which will be adopted later on tonight. Uh, that concludes, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Counselor Rist. I will accept that. Uh, report, Counselor, police safety, Counselor Zerit?
Thank you, uh, President Gomez. Um, we have not met uh, since uh, the last council meeting. Um, we will be meeting next on, at six PM on Thursday, February third. Again, as previously noted, our plan will be to meet on the first Tuesday of every month, but there was a schedule conflict this time. Uh, we, um, at uh, uh, the next meeting, there will be a public hearing, uh, for uh, uh, the request by the owner of nineteen Milka Way, uh, to review the parking on that street. Um, and um, otherwise, as noted, we haven't met other, other agenda items. Uh, thus concludes.
Counselor Zerit, uh, first, thank you for the report, but uh, Counselor Zerit, I see that you have a few items that is going to expire. Uh, maybe if you ask for extension of, 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 of three of them. Um, so we have the quarterly fire, uh, report, the intersection, request the safety sidewalk intersection, and the ordinance review committee final report.
That is an excellent recommendation, Mr. President. I appreciate your keen eye. So uh, on those three items, the quarterly fire department report, the request to review safety of the sidewalks, South Street and Main Street intersection, and the ordinance review committee's final report, um, I'll request ninety-day extensions on all those in the form of a motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second to extend for ninety-day extension, those three items. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Just, just one clarification, Owen. The first one doesn't have an expiration date. It's one of those standing things. So did you really mean just the two?
Well, um, I'd appeal to uh, President Gomez, who was the former um, chair, but I would assume that, I mean, it's still an agenda item in, um, I don't.
If we, uh, if we're going to keep it, uh, as a item that is going to be there forever because we're going to do a report, um, quarterly, I, I, I don't think probably we don't, we don't need any uh, extension, but let's ask uh, the rural chairman, uh, Counselor Rist.
Uh, yeah, I, I have my hand up because the finance committee also has two quarterly reports that do not have an end date. We want those quarterly reports to be constant. So I think, and you might also add, I think you were talking about adding police reports et cetera, et cetera. Uh, so those constant reports don't need a, an end date. They should just put the date that they started uh, on the councils.
Thank you, Counselor.
I'd like to make a new motion that if, if the second could retract their second, then.
I retract my second.
I'll retract my motion. I'll make a new motion to request a ninety-day extension on the following two agenda items. Uh, the request to review safety of the sidewalk on South Street and Main Street intersection and the ordinance review committee's final report.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second for ninety-day extension of those two items. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Uh, Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerit?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Counselor Zerit. Um, appointments, Counselor Rothschild?
Hello. Um, so we met last Wednesday and we had two new appointments before us. Uh, Crystal Cody, Cody Stotes for the Council on Aging and Timothy Gerso for the Zoning Board of Appeals and Associate Member. Both of them came to our meeting, um, and shared with us, they both, um, shared with us their experience and they both had a lot of experience in the respective areas. Um, Timothy has a, he is a master's in urban planning and he teaches, um, and he's always, you know, tells the students they should get involved with city government. He's thought he needs to practice what he, what he says. And, um, so that, and Crystal Cody Stotes, um, does a lot of work with aging population and, um, came to us well recommended also from JP Kuzinski came to speak in her favor. So it was great to meet them both. So I'd like to make a motion to confirm the appointments of Crystal Cody Stotes to the Council on Aging with a term expiration twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-three and Timothy Gerso to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Associate Member with term expiration twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to, for the appointment of those two members of, with the expiration term of twenty twenty-three. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zerit?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Um, and I didn't mention, but you can guess we voted. Um, and I didn't mention, but you can guess we voted three to zero, um, to recommend all those confirmations. For the reappointments, uh, we, we, um, nobody came that was being reappointed. I did speak on the phone with Charles Duffy from the Veterans Council. And he did confirm what I've been saying that they haven't met so that, since the pandemic started and he's very, he's capable of meeting on Zoom and looking forward to that, but, um, he wasn't even sure if they have a chair anymore. So, um, I'm hoping we can get that committee functioning again so that they can, um, do the work that they do, um, supporting veterans in our community. But we, um, we're happy to support the continuing work of all the members that are up for reappointment. Um, the only one we're, I'm not going to be, I'm going to not be asking for your vote to confirm is, shoot, was it Bryce? I think it was Bryce. One of them's withdrawing from the, um, Commission on Disability reappointment. I think it was Robert. I have to check my notes. Do, um, do you guys remember who was in the appointments committee? Which of those two?
Councilor Riley?
No. I'll look at my notes.
Excuse me just one second. I'm pulling up the.
Wait a minute. In the meantime, I'll vote, uh, I'll do the others. Um, I'll make a motion to reappoint, we all voted three to zero, Alody Chipcoin to the Agricultural Commission, James Ramsey to the Register of Voters, and Charles Duffy to the Veterans Council with a term expiration twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to reappoint all those three members. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Brad Riley?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Yeah, Mr. President, if I might just, uh, real quickly, um, to confirm, um, it is, um, Robert Nichols for the Commission on Disability who, um, is having the, uh, reappointment withdrawn.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Brad's our new clerk. So I'd like to, I'd like to recommend the confirmation of Bryce LaPlante to the Commission on Disability with a term expiration twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second, uh, for this appointment. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Okay, you're just doing one person?
Yeah, because the other one we're voting not to, you know, could I do it? Not to.
I mean, you're, you're not going to do the whole batch of reappointments altogether?
I just did them.
That's good. We have a motion and a second.
No, you've got a whole group of them.
I just did it though.
It's, I'm sorry, but we have a motion and a second. Let's vote for this one and let's have a discussion of the other ones.
Well, I know what you're talking about. Sorry.
Okay, um, let's see, where am I?
It's two different meetings that we did at Barb, so I have it in two different batches.
I'm sorry, but we have a motion and a second. Let's vote for this one, then we have a discussion.
Okay, um, boy, I've lost you. Well, I'm going to start with Connie Denham.
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Brad Riley?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Motion passes. Councilor Rothschild?
Okay, so I feel, so we had two different meetings since we've met, so I have them in two different big batches of people. So we didn't do them all at once because we did them in two different groups, but, um, just to take care of, um, Robert so that he doesn't get lost in the, I'm going to recommend that, how do I say it? Um, that we don't confirm him as to, to become, to be reappointed. To reject him. I hear it sounds like you said it, reject because he's withdrawing. So, so I'm recommending that we reject his reappointment for Robert Nichols to the Commission on Disability.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second to reject this appointment. Any further discussion? Seeing none, um, Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez, no, um, okay, um, Omar Gomez?
Hi.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Brad Riley?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Hi.
Okay.
Motion passes, uh, Councilor Rothschild?
Thank you. Now here's our new appointments from our December twenty-second meeting. So we had, these are the new appointments, Rachel Phillips to the Aqua, Aqua for Protection Committee, Marty Klein to the Commission on Disability. Ebenezer Afari Kuma to the Community Relations Committee. And John Pepe to the Energy Advisory Committee. All of those with a term expiration twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. We all, we recommended all of them to be confirmed three to zero from that committee. So I make a motion that we confirm them.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a second to confirm those, uh, um, appoint, appointments, uh, for the expiration of twenty twenty-four. Any further discussion, Councilor Sarret?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to really quickly speak to, um, Rachel Phillips' appointment to the Aqua for Protection Committee. Um, as some of you may know, this committee has not met in some time. Um, uh, Ms. Phillips is very passionate about, uh, this, this topic and our aquifer, which we all know is very important to our city and made concerted efforts to, um, apply, uh, to reinvigorate the committee. So, um, wholeheartedly in support of, um, her, uh, being on the committee as well as the committee itself and its mission to protect our valuable resource.
Thank you, Councilor. Barbara?
Uh, Omar Gomez?
Hi.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Brad Riley?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, familiar of all the reappointments from that meeting. So there's Russell Brain. Um, we've all, we voted three to nothing to confirm all of these, um, candidates. So there's Russell Brain to the Agricultural Commission. Michael Sizerwick, how do I say it? To the Aqua for Protection Committee. Thomas Brown to the Council on Aging. Oh, John Norman to the C R C. Theodore Perch and Tracy Eller to the E C A. Michael Sizerwick to the Historical Commission. Bette Sanderson to the Manhand Trail Committee. John Atwater to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And all of those are with a term expiration twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Make a motion to confirm their appointments, reappointments.
Seconded.
Seconded. You have a motion and a second for all those reappointments, uh, with expiration term of twenty twenty-four. Um, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, Barbara?
Connie Denham?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Brad Riley?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So cool. Yeah, um, thank you, everyone, for being with me for all those appointments. It's, uh, again, heartening to see how everyone, how many people step up and volunteer in the city. Um, I really didn't, I really wasn't aware of, like, everyone who did so much before I was on city council and got to see it for myself. So, um, I, this is definitely a feel-good committee. I really enjoy it. And so, um, I look forward to continuing to work with Councilor Riley and Councilor Gomez. Um, our next meeting is next Wednesday, um, the whatever night, twenty, what's twenty-seven? Um, next Wednesday, four o'clock. Thank you, and thus concludes.
Thank you, Councilor Rothschild. Uh, ordinance, Vice President Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'm going to start with some housekeeping. Um, I would like to request in the form of a motion and ninety day extension for all of our items excluding the Juneteenth resolution.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to, uh, for extension of ninety days, uh, for those items the Vice President, uh, Derby, uh, mentioned. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Brad Riley?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you. A little bit more housekeeping. Um, we have received a request, um, from the property owner at Seven Groveland Street to, uh, remove without prejudice, um, their request to rezone their parcel. Um, this was something that we had met on a few times. Um, and it, uh, was brought forward by the landowner. They decided that they were going to, um, request that that be, um, taken off the agenda. So in the form of a motion, I would like to take the rezoning request for Seven Groveland Street from R fifteen to highway business, uh, and it, uh, take it off our agenda without prejudice.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to remove the rezoning request for the Seven Grove Plan Street, um, without prejudice. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Brad Riley?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Um, and, uh, we have a public hearing to set for our Juneteenth resolution and the amendments to the silly, city holiday ordinance to, and I would like to, in the form of a motion, set a public hearing for six fifteen on February second, uh, in these chambers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, to set up a public hearing, uh, six fifteen in this chamber. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Brad Riley?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi. Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, and as I'm sitting here looking at this, I realized that that public hearing is not going to be until February and it expires the thirty-first. Pardon my mistake. I would like to request, uh, let's go with a, a two-week extension for that, uh, the Juneteenth resolution in the form of a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for two weeks' extension. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Brad Riley?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Look, I can't even say.
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi. Motion passes.
Thank you. Um, a couple of announcements to make. Um, we have a continued public hearing with the Planning Board scheduled for next Tuesday, the twenty-fifth at six P M. Uh, and that is discussing, um, the, uh, the zoning amendments around, um, a smart growth district and planned residential development. So just want to make sure that people are aware of that meeting. Uh, the next ordinance meeting is going to be the twenty-seventh, so January twenty-seventh at six P M. So if you are interested in any of the items on our agenda, that is going to be a good one to come to. And I believe that concludes.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Uh, property, I think we covered everything in property. Um, do we have a, do we schedule a meeting yet or no?
I don't believe so, Mr. President, because I don't think we had anything to discuss.
Okay, thank you. Um, rules on government relations, uh, Councilor Rist?
President, um, we met last week. I was elected chair. Uh, on the committee is Counselor Kozinski and Counselor Denham. Counselor Denham graciously agreed to be the clerk. Um, I would first do a little, um, uh, an extension, please, on the first item on the amendment to, at rule twenty. I would like to request a ninety days, a day extension in the form of a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, for ninety day extension. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara?
Brad Riley?
Hi.
Dan Rist?
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Hi.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Connie Denham?
Hi.
Salem Derby?
Hi.
Omar Gomez?
Hi.
Tom Peak?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Uh, Mr. President, with your permission, I'd like to share the resolution which we will vote on tonight. I assume that's okay. Uh, this resolution was amended and I'd like to, uh, thank Counselor Denham for her work on new language and I'd like to turn it over to her to explain the new language and, uh, her thinking as well as to read the resolution. This passed three to zero at the rules meeting. Councilor Denham?
Yep, so, um, the changes, the, the amendments came in, in basically two paragraphs. The second paragraph starts, whereas the City of East Hampton values all its citizens. We made it, uh, we added additional recognition in terms of many races and ethnicities where it was just cities. And we also made the language, um, in, in just in, uh, switching some words around just to be more inclusive of that recognition. Um, and then the second amendment really came in additional language. In the fourth paragraph, uh, to include, uh, class, um, sex. And we expanded disabilities. Uh, it was qualified with, um, physical and mental disabilities, but there's more disabilities. So we just qualified that just as disabilities. Um, and I think that's the, um, the, you know, primary changes in terms of, uh, identities. And then we also expanded it to include our role, not just, uh, tolerating any form or condoning, not condoning or tolerating, but we also discussed, had a great conversation about creating spaces of inclusion and, and challenging. So there's a, there's an action piece there, not just in terms of we don't, uh, tolerate that, but we're actually going to, um, potentially create spaces and opportunities of, of dialogue within the community, um, and action.
Thank you. Councilor Rist?
Before I ask Counselor Denham to read it, I just want to say that, um, I'm especially thrilled about the addition of class as part of the discrimination. I know that I've dealt with affordable housing and at one time we've had to deal with people that discriminate against each other because of their economic status. And I think that we need to remember that. We should have affordable housing projects coming forward and there will be debates about economic status at that point. And we all need to remember this resolution as we move forward in this term, uh, especially in those areas, but for everything. Because everything we do affects everybody and we have to be careful not to discriminate and we don't tolerate it. And I love the language that Connie added for spaces of inclusion because that challenges us to maybe come up with some ideas there. So I'd like, uh, Mr. President, if that's all right, I'd like, uh, Counselor Denham to read the resolution as she did a lot of the work on this.
Thank you, Councilor Rist, uh, Councilor Denham?
Yeah, so I move that City Council adopts the amended, uh, resolution, um, pertaining to discrimination and tolerance as follows. Whereas one of the fundamental core values of the City of East Hampton is to treat all persons with respect and dignity. And whereas the City of East Hampton values all of its citizens and recognizes the many races and ethnicities of its citizens have contributed to the strength of character of East Hampton. And whereas the City of East Hampton recognizes the strength in the diversity and inclusiveness of its citizenry. And now therefore be it hereby resolved that the City of East Hampton and its representatives shall not condone or tolerate any form of discrimination and will create spaces of inclusion by challenging any and all form of discrimination on the basis of race, color, class, religious creed, age, familial status, national origin, immigration status, sexual orientation, sex, gender, identity or expression, disabilities or veteran status.
Second. We have a motion and a second to, uh, approve the resolution or the sentence that equals a resolution pertaining to discrimination and tolerance. Any further discussion, Councilor Sarret?
Just a quick thank you to, uh, my new colleague, Counselor Denham. Um, you know, we've been reaffirming this for the brief time I've been on the council and, uh, you know, one of the great things about. And, uh, you know, one of the great things about turnover and new members is new sets of eyes and ideals and experience. So I just wanted to thank you for recognizing how we could take a, a good document to make it better. There's always room for improvement and this is clearly one of those cases. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other, Councilor? Seeing none, Barbara.
Um, I, I just want, Connie, I noticed that there was an S missing on form and I'll add it.
Yes.
I noticed you hesitated, so I'll fix that. Dan Rest.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Brad Riley.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Rules Committee has no further meetings scheduled. We will deal with Rule 20 when we get closer to getting back in chambers, which I hope will be this spring, maybe. Who knows? So that concludes, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Rest. That hot committee, we have a senior tax work of committee. We'd have Counselor Kuzinski. He didn't send me anything either. Nothing. All businesses are pending. We have new businesses. Vice President Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to start with the three mayoral appointments. I would like to send the mayoral appointments of Zachary Bounas for Affordable and Fair Housing, expiration term 1231 2022. Molly Goodwin on the Commission on Disability, 1231 2022, and Stan, Stanley Diamond, Commission on Disability, 1231 2222, to the Appointments Subcommittee.
Second.
Okay.
We have a, we have a motion and a second for, to send these three new appointments to the Appointments Committee with expiration term of 1231 2022. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Brad Riley.
Hi.
And Dan Rest.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, next I would like to make a motion to send the review as required by the City Charter of elected officials and boards and committees stipends to finance.
Second. We have a motion and a second to send the elected official boards and committees type in review as required by the City Charter to the Finance Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Brad Riley.
Hi.
Dan Rest.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next on the docket, I would like to move that we send the 2021 Fire Department Annual Report to Public Safety.
Seconded.
We have a motion and a seconds to move the 2021 Fire Department Annual Report to the Police Safety Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara.
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Brad Riley.
Hi.
Dan Rest.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and last, I would like to send the Mass Development Memorandum of Agreement on Elementary School Reuse to the Property Committee.
Second. We have a motion and a second to send the Mass Development Memorandum of Agreement, Elementary School Reuse, to the Property Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Barbara.
Salem Derby.
Hi.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Brad Riley.
Hi.
Dan Rest.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Hi.
Motion passes. So look like we do all the report standing, all business, new business and, um, Barbara?
I just, um, at, at the last meeting, there were three committees that hadn't said who, what their reorganization was. Now I know Salem announced, told me ordinance rules, Dan told me, but Owen, I'm not sure you announced who your chair and clerk were.
Does it, Police Safety?
No, or property, whoever's property.
Property is JP is the chair and Owen is the clerk.
Oh, okay. In ordinance, we have Salem and.
And Lindsay's our clerk and Tom as well.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Thank you. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Moved. Seconded.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Barbara.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
Uh, Tom Peak.
Hi.
Brad Riley.
Hi.
Dan Rest.
Hi.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Hi.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Connie Denham.
Hi.
And Salem Derby.
Hi.
Motion passes. Everybody have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody. See you soon.
Thanks.